Good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education and the public hearing on the 2022-2023 proposed budget. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after Mr. Motisi's presentation. Both sessions will be thirty minutes in duration and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the microphones in the front of the auditorium. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments so that the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have thirty seconds left, so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeFendini, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Before we begin with tonight's budget hearing portion of the meeting, obviously, you know, the community is noting there are a few members of our team tonight that are not with us. I have some really good news to report out. One of our teachers, social studies teacher over at Farmingdale High School, Mr. Jim Hughes, is being recognized tonight for an incredible achievement. He has been nominated for and successfully earned a BOSI's award, basically signifying a tremendous achievement in the area of their work and their service to children. Jim has done an outstanding job, if anybody knows Jim, through tremendous adversity. I don't know anybody that's been through as much as he's been through in his life, and yet, if you speak to him, you would never know anything about it. He has this amazing disposition, and he instills that with his students every single day that he works with them. So, very proud of Jim for his accomplishments, and a few of us took a little bit of time, obviously, to spend tonight with him at the actual ceremony and celebrate with him tonight. So, again, I just wanted to share that with the Board of Education, that tonight is a good night in that regard, and if there were ever a night where, I know a lot of us don't ever miss meetings, but if it was a night to miss a meeting, it was tonight to celebrate that man's tremendous achievements. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations to Mr. Hughes. He's definitely iconic here in Farmingdale and an amazing human being, so I'm very happy for him. Okay, so I'd like to open up the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first thirty minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open. The public participation will now open.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chuck Goslin. I live in Farmingdale for forty-five-plus years. I'm a product of the Farmingdale High School, the complete Farmingdale system, and my two kids as well, long graduated. So, goes back, I go back a long way. But I'd like to address a question to the board. Don't expect an answer right now. If anyone wants to answer at the end, I appreciate that. But I'd like to know if the board feels that putting more money into the education system will make the education system better? That's my key point. Over the years, I've drummed around the internet and looked at some other education systems around the world, and country by country, Finland has the number one best-rated education system, followed by Japan, South Korea, and the United States is number twenty. That doesn't make me feel good, and I don't think you guys would feel good about that either. However, we're a little bit higher in the spending per student by country. Norway's number one, and good old USA is number two, Korea, South Korea is third, yet the people that finish first and second are eleventh and twelfth. Interesting point. And our wonderful New York State, well, we spend twice as much money on education than the rest of the United States does. So, again, does putting more money into the education system get a better result? I don't think so. A little disappointed, I know I'm late to the game, but I have looked at a couple of the meetings over the past couple of months online, which I thank you for that, and that's definitely being transparent. But I have an issue with receiving eight million dollars more in revenue, and you spent it all. Four point five percent, I think one of your budget presentations I picked up was going to be like four point nine percent or four point eight. You brought it down to four point five. But when you add the tax levy on to that at one point six, this is a seven percent increase in probably one of the worst years in twenty, one of the worst years since I can remember. My retirement system is, my retirement accounts are taking a dump, as sure many other people's are, and inflation and all the other good stuff. A seven percent increase in school taxes is not acceptable, as far as I am concerned. When I was going to school here, there were thirteen thousand students.
Mr. Goslin, almost thirty seconds, okay?
Okay, almost done. Thirteen thousand students, nine schools. Today, we have fifty-six-hundred students in six schools. So, again, how much money are we going to spend to get what result? What's the cost of educating each student? I don't see that really on any literature. And that should really be more transparent to post that number.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to comment on that?
Please. Chuck, there's a lot to what it is you just asked, and surely, in the few minutes that we have here tonight, I wouldn't dare to try to answer all the complexities associated with the funding of education in the United States versus, you know, other areas of the world, New York State versus, we'd be certainly happy to reach back out to you and have that more detailed conversation. There's lots of different things that go into that, some of which we have control over, much of which we don't have control over, much of which are controlled via laws and contracts and all sorts of different obligations that are outside of our control. But, again, more than happy to talk to you about that. The one question, and I can speak to you about this too, is you had mentioned an increase in seven percent. I'm not sure where you got that number from. The increase in property taxes for this year is one point five nine percent year over year, with an increase in the budget of about four and a half percent year over year. You could certainly come up with a second public participation and maybe sort of work out for us how that math worked and how you got to a seven percent increase. It was a little over four percent for the budget-to-budget, and it was a one point five nine percent increase in taxes to the community. So, we can certainly talk about that, just so that I can understand that local-level stuff, because that we can talk about.
Is there any order for speaking?
Ernie Thompson, also lifelong resident K through twelve here. Children when here were educated in this district, always been a public school guy. We built a beautiful complex here. I'm just wondering, with the money that we put in here, is there any idea of swapping Farmingdale High School with the junior high school, or the middle school as it's known now? The reason I'm asking that, we got the pool here. When you have meets at the high school level, does that mean we have to hire buses every time there's a meet to come over here? Or is there plans on swapping the schools? That's it.
Great. Awesome, awesome question. Not the first time we've been asked that question. No, there's no plan to swap the high school and the middle school. The reason why the Aquatic Center was actually brought to Howitt for a number of reasons. There's no increased cost in transportation, so let me just talk about that real quick. So, we have two different swimming programs. We have a middle school swim program, and we have a high school swim program. So, when the pool was at the high school, as it is now, we have to pay for a bus to transport the middle school kids to the high school to be a part of the swim program that we've offered for a long time, since your children were here as well. Now, we just have to basically use that bus in reverse. Basically, the high school kids are going to be taking the bus from the high school here to the middle school. Couple of reasons why the pool is here, again, one way or another, we're transporting our students, right? So, whether or not it was high school kids here or here to the high school, our actual extra interschoolastic program was going to have to travel. A vast majority of the community that does use the actual Aquatic Center are not in South Farmingdale. It's coming from all over the community. The Aquatic Center where it is now is more centrally located, so it is actually easier for a majority of our community to get to it. Another big reason, which is something that we're going to be unveiling really soon, which is probably the most exciting part of the Aquatic Center, you know, release, is we are going to be opening up the Aquatic Center because it's detached from the building. So, this is not a connected structure, it's not a connected system. We're going to be able to offer programs during the actual academic day, which we would not have been able to do if the pool were located at the high school because of the limited amount of parking that we have for the students. We'd never be able to share a lot safely. We'd be intermixing the community and the students. Because we located it at a separate location, we can more clearly delineate those parking areas and keep the building separate. So, as an example, right now, we can open the building at nine or ten o'clock if the senior citizens wanted to run an aquaerobics class. When we move it to the middle school, we can now offer that aquaerobics class because we can open the pool at ten o'clock in the morning, right in the middle of the day, and not really significantly change parking-related circumstances, because it has its own private lot, which it wouldn't be privy to over the high school. So, no increased cost as far as that goes. Buses were going back one way or another, and the only other part to it was, I've been asked this question a few times, is it an interruption because the high school kids loved to go in the pool and they loved to have swim as a part of their physical education program? I actually had the chance to meet with the student body leading up to this project, and the sentiment, generally speaking, was that most students did not actually enjoy getting in the pool early in the morning hours. A lot of the student body said that it was not, you know, their most enjoyable time getting in the pool, especially through the winter season when it was cold. So, again, no real loss there. The one thing we are able to keep, though, that was a big part of our program, is the lifeguard program, which has been a big program for us. We have a lot of our students that do go on to become lifeguards. They earn some money. They get into the retirement system early. We will still offer that via transportation at the end of the day. So, again, all the things that we had that were great about it, we're not losing. We flip-flopped the middle school and the high school. The community enjoys the fact that it's at the center, and we have more access for our community to this pool than we would have had the pool stayed over at Farmingdale High School.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic question, though. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Cronin, an eighteen-year resident of Farmingdale. I'm only here tonight because I had emailed the board on May third, and on follow-up, I was told by the district clerk that she did not forward my email to the board, but instead does a synopsis. And I was concerned because it was a matter of public safety. I thought I should come in to make sure that it was read. I don't know how many letters you get. If you have three, you may read them, but if you have fifty, you may not be able to read everything you get electronically. So, that was one issue. I don't know if you get all the emails that get sent to you and you had read this. The second issue is...
Tracy, let me just answer that one first. So, they have the letter. The district clerk sends everything to the Board of Education. They have the letter, they reviewed it, and they actually had a chance to discuss it to some degree. So, just in preparation for your comments, they did read it.
Wonderful. And then, I just want to commend you all for the hard work you do. The school district's wonderful, and this is actually not, I hope nobody minds this, a request for decreasing spending, but hopefully, a little bit of an apportionment to better working on the security of the high school because of the proximity to the park. And what has been well-known is a few incidents of large crowds going in and having underage drinking, getting through the hole in the fence. That has been repeatedly, you know, breached and not fully maintained. Also, a minimal amount of staff. I think there's only one person that secures all the buildings, and that's got to be very daunting if fifty to a hundred students arrive. How is one, you know, security guard going to manage that? That's kind of unfair to him, so I'm hoping that for his sake and the local residents that, I don't know, maybe a security team could come in and give advice and kind of really manage it so that when the warm weather comes, we don't have such a large group of students, you know, on the grounds, you know, parents dropping off. We've been told a few. Maybe a letter out to the parents not to drop off the students for underage drinking on the grounds, et cetera. I don't know, maybe a light system. So, I know that doesn't go with the reduced funds budget, but it's an important thing to consider. So, hopefully, we'll look for your guidance in the future on it.
We are on receipt of your letter, and thank you for your input on that. We will be discussing it.
Okay, great. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Have you used that to the state police department? Because I know the park area over there, Nassau County, cannot really go in there and, you know, control that area, but I know the state police have the authority to do that.
I would be happy to forward a copy of the letter to the state police. If you think it would be helpful, I'd be happy to do...
I think it would be helpful.
I will certainly do that, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments and concerns. Mr. DeFendini, can we have your update?
Yeah, again, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Motisi to talk about the budget as, obviously, the reason why we're here this evening. I can actually ask the board, the administrative team, to make your way into the audience. Mr. Motisi has a short presentation, and then we'll be back again to do our second public participation. I apologize. Just give it one minute to load.
Yeah, I apologize. That was working an hour ago. Do you want me to tell you when to switch? All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight to our final presentation. Tonight's meeting and presentation is intended to be a summary of the 2022-23 proposed budget. All of the details regarding the 2022-23 budget can be found on the district's website. We have a ton of Excel documents, a ton of work that goes into it. All of the presentations are there, and the actual live presentations are on our YouTube channel for anyone who has missed them. In addition to that, last week, at our regular Board of Education monthly meeting, we did have an interactive conversation with the community regarding the budget, and we did send out a message to the community the very next day asking for questions. So, there was a lot going around in the newspapers and social media regarding the budget, some information that was misleading, and we wanted to take that opportunity to give the community a forum to ask any question. And for the past week, that document has been open. We have been collecting and compiling all of the answers to these questions with the intention of releasing them in the next day or so. There was a lot of questions in there, a lot of repeat questions, a lot of very good questions. So, what we did is we compiled the document into one easy-to-read format for the community, and we will be releasing that within the next day or two. Paul, next slide, please. So, over the past two months, or I should say, really, the last month, we've had about twenty budget workshops to the community. The community has had opportunities to come and see us present on the budget. All of the PTAs, the Youth Council, the Farmingdale Library, the Chamber of Commerce, we did all of the buildings. All of them were well-attended. There were occasional questions that were asked, but overall, we believe that the message was well-received by the community, and we think that what exactly we did with this budget was well-understood from their perspective. Up on the screen right now, we have the 2022-23 proposed revenue budget. This is our year-over-year budget comparison, which highlights, which I want to highlight on here is two items. First is the additional state aid that the district received. So, we've been talking about this for the last few years. Those in the business official community have been talking about it for almost a decade now, but the district was owed approximately eight-and-a-half million dollars per year since the Foundation Aid Formula was instituted a long time ago. And last year, the governor decided that this was the time to make it all come true. So, what they did is they proposed a phase-in period whereby the district, in Farmingdale's case, would receive the additional aid in three phases: 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24. We're going to go into a little, on the next slide, a little bit what we did with all of that money and why we did what we did. But that is very important, and that was a big win for a lot of the districts across the state, once that Foundation Aid Formula was reinstated. Foundation Aid is the largest portion of the state aid that the district receives. The other categories make up the difference, but they are of smaller amounts. Last thing I want to mention on here is the year-over-year levy increase. As you can see on the slide, last year, we had a one point five one percent levy increase. This year, we're looking at a one point five nine percent increase. What I wanted to mention there is that the district recognized, you know, that this community has historically supported a tax cap, a budget that is within the New York State tax cap. And originally, when our tax cap was submitted to New York State back at the end of February, it's actually due on March first, we were still working through our budget process. And we originally went out with a two point oh six, which is what I had to publish with the state, but we worked with the board, we worked with the administration, we worked with our principals to get that number down a little bit, to a little bit less, because we knew that the pressures that everyone was feeling in the community. I've said this at every one of my presentations, the effects of inflation are real. They're here to stay for a little bit, and just as it's impacting everybody in the community, and it's impacting us when we go to the supermarkets, when we drive to work every day, it's impacting the district as well. We're going to see a little bit of that on the next slide, but it was a major concern when we built this budget, both on the expenditure side and in our considerations when we did the tax levy calculation. Last thing I want to just say over here is that the Farmingdale School District has stayed within the tax levy cap. Since its institution, we've never tried to pierce the cap. Historically, we have averaged about a one point seven five on the levy increase year over year, and I think when you look at the programs in this district and you think about all that we accomplish year over year, that's pretty remarkable that you're able to keep those numbers really that low. So, year-over-year increase on the appropriation side looks a little different, right? So, we have a four-and-a-half percent increase on the appropriations, and the biggest chunk of this increase is, is related to salaries. And that is where all of the additional Foundation Aid was really used. That's where we utilized all of it. So, and it's important to note and to mention that we recognize that there was a tremendous need for the students. Over eighty-one percent of the increase in this year-over-year budget, eighty-one percent of the almost eight million dollars, is all related to teachers' salaries, instructional support salaries, classrooms. It's all instruction, BOSI's. And the reason for that is there was a tremendous need in the areas of special education, guidance, social work, all of those mental health services. There was this need and a demand that we knew we had to meet. And I've been in the district for a long time, for thirteen years now, working on the budgets with Paul, and this was the first time in a long time that we've had to add staff like this. And we knew that we had to meet the demands of the students. I mean, we are still very much fighting things that have happened over the last few years. And on top of that, we had the growing special education population to begin with. Over the years, enrollment in the district has declined, but that's our general enrollment, our special education enrollment, our ENL, our students requiring ENL services, our students requiring... our students requiring 504 accommodations. All of that has been increasing over the years. And that is really what this budget is designed to meet. It's designed to meet the needs of those children. In the employee benefits section, we did happen to see our first big increase in a few years in the health benefits. We've had pretty favorable increases, or I should say rates, the last few years in health and in the pension system. The pension systems continue to come in relatively low and favorable, but the health did see a big jump this year, which is noticed in the increase there year-over-year. As far as the other codes go, there's really two things that are driving all of those codes, and that is, as I had mentioned, the, the services for students, the driving need, the increased need for students are driving a lot of those, and inflation. So, our utilities line, there's a, there's a $230,000 increase in our utilities as a result of the effects that we're feeling this year. So, we had to design this budget, we had to build in, build in the appropriation side, all of the increased costs that we were seeing as a result of the current economic environment. So the 4.56% increase year-over-year is being funded largely by the state, the additional state funding that we received. Lastly, the contingent budget. If the budget next week were to fail, the district has the opportunity to go out for a second vote. Or I should say, the board has the opportunity to propose a new budget or the same budget at the next, at the next, in June. Should the vote go down a second time, then we go to what is known as a contingent budget. And the way a contingent budget works, it is a zero increase in the tax levy year-over-year. So that would mean a 2 point, it's called a $2.1 million reduction would be required from the budget. And those areas, we would have to meet to determine where those, what the affected areas would be. Up here on the slide is just some notes on areas that have been looked at in the past. As far as my tenure here in the district, there's, I've never seen a contingent budget. I do know that, I have heard that there were contingent budgets years ago, but I, we've never gone through this process as a, as a team right here. But these are some of the areas that have been looked at in the past. A lot of it is driven by some, the, the contingent budget is driven by the state, the reduction in, in the tax levy. And then there's an allocation that the district follows, which is also guided by the state in terms of how and where you would take those reductions. So just a quick summary, year-over-year budget increase of $7,976,792 for a total 2022-23 proposed budget of $182,892,350, which represents a 4.56% increase year-over-year on the budget and a 1.59% increase on the levy, again, which is within the tax levy calculation. Proposition one, a week from today, the voters will have the opportunity to vote on the budget as a whole. The proposition number one is to vote for the 2223 school budget, all items, all account codes, the way they are stated and presented tonight and on the district's website. Proposition number two is a capital proposition. This is, we have to ask permission from the community in order to do two things with this proposition. One is to draw down $5 million for capital work that we are looking to do. We are working with our architects to prioritize some of this work. Basically, there are things that we have on our five-year plan that we are looking to complete, such as parking lot upgrades, playgrounds, some HVAC work, things of that nature. We work with them, they prioritize it for us. And then, we ask the community for this funding in order to accomplish those projects. There is really no timeframe on spending the money. We do try to use it as, as soon as we can. We want to make sure we get the best prices on all of our, with all of our contractors. But the $5 million drawdown is for, we need to ask the community for permission in order to draw that down so that we can continue to do facility work. That $5 million comes from the capital reserve, which is like our savings account for facilities projects or for home improvements, to kind of simplify it a little. The second part of proposition number two is to request permission from the community to establish a new reserve. So, the current reserve that we have is fully funded. There's about $8 million left in it. Once, if the community approves the $5 million drawdown, there'll be $3 million left in it, and that $3 million would go into a new reserve, which the district would then be allowed to save against in the future if there's any surpluses at the end of the year, to again, go towards future capital work and future capital projects. That capital reserve is $30 million over a 10-year period. After 10 years, the, the reserve would have to be liquidated or transferred into a new capital reserve if the, if the proceeds had not been used. Proposition number three is for the annual Youth Council budget. The Youth Council is proposing a zero increase year-over-year on their levy. Everybody in this room is familiar with, with the Youth Council program and the budget. Nassau, we're one of the only schools around that, that really has this program. And it's a great program for the kids and for the community. So that's proposition number three. And then, lastly, there are two members of the Board of Education that are up for reelection. Suzanne D'Amico and Mr. Michael Goldberg are up for reelection. It is a contested election. There are two incumbents running against them, Parsa Kareemi and Nicole Ognafo. They will, they will all be on the ballots as presented here for your, for the community to vote on. There is a, there was a meet the candidates forum, which is online. If anybody has a chance to take a look at it, I think you get a good picture of what everyone stands for. If you get a chance, check it out. And really, that is tonight's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time regarding the budget. All right, thank you, guys. Give us one second to raise the-
Okay, so I want to thank Mr. Defendini and Mr. Motisi for that presentation and for their tireless amount of work that went into this. They always do a great job, so thank you. Okay, so I'd like to open up the meeting for the second public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first 30 minutes, actually, it is the last 30 minutes. So the mic is open.
Hi, my name is Brian Keena. Guess I lost my audience, but there was two, I have two questions. One was, in the presentation, you talked about, or showed the increase in salaries of about $5 million and talked about the increase in staff. Can you break that down between how much of the $5 million was new staff and how much is an increase in salaries of existing employees? And then, your benefit cost goes up like approximately 4%. How much of that is medical? And, you know, how do, how do you guys do that? Because, you know, my company, it's 10, 15, 20% of just on medical. So, you know, that seems pretty impressive. But if you can give any kind of color on that kind of breakdown, I appreciate it.
Hi, Brian. So, the, I would have to get back to you on, on the exact versus, the new hires versus what was already there. If you want to shoot me an email, I'd be more than happy to reply to you, or you could always give me a call. The only reason I say that is because I would have to wait till the next meeting, and that would be after the budget vote. So, by all means, you can call my office or shoot me an email. Okay? Regarding the second one, those increases are driven by, by the state. They tell us what the rates are, and everything is contractually obligated. So, we have all of the bargaining units in the district that have a certain percentage that the district pays for versus what the employee pays for. And then the rates on the premiums for the insurance policies, for the health insurance is driven by, by NISHIP, really. So, this year, it was about a 13% increase. Paul just put up a good point also. On the website, the presentations that I did for the board back in March and April, those, those also show a little bit more detail, not to the level that you're looking to get to with the salaries. But it does show, it does show a little bit more in the salaries, a little bit more in the benefits. And then also, on the website, under the budget documents, is an Excel document with the detailed account codes. And you can see in the benefits codes, data 9100 codes. You can see where most of the increase went, and it is the health, it is the health code.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for your comments and concerns. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. Please be sure to come out and vote on Tuesday from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Right here at Howitt. Thank you.